All right, I will call to order the meeting, the school committee workshop, February 17th, 2022. And I will, we're going to start with school committee items, blueprint for strategic planning. And I will turn it over to you, Jason.
Perfect.
Thanks, Tara. Good evening, everybody. I know we're waiting on Jane, she should be here shortly, but we wanted to, before we, jumping into the work, we wanted to, I wanted to share a quick draft of our new high school promotional video. Thank you, Amanda. Great suggestion. So Jill and I have been working with Jessie. Jessie is a saint for helping us do this. And so, I don't know, Jessie, I don't know if he can queue it up, or, it's only about three minutes, but, and so, just the overall gist is for families, recruitment, excitement, high energy, like really trying to share the strengths of the high school. And Jessie sent us a draft today, so we could have it for tonight. Welcome to BMR. It is undeniable that we need a new facility. And that is something that we've been hard at work to make happen for our students. And we would ask you to join the cause and help us get to the place where our students have the facilities that they deserve.
It's not about the building, it's about the people who are in it.
There is a lot of magic that is happening inside of this school for the 400-plus students that walk through its doors every day.
Ask your parents, what was high school like for you? And I'm pretty confident that they will center their stories around friends and relationships.
We have something for every single student that joins us each day.
We offer English electives, in English 9, 10, AP Lit, AP Lang, AP Calculus, AP Biology, Forensics, we have Environmental Science, Marine Biology, we have that in also CP and honors level. Photography and digital media, we have digital design, video game design, world history, US history, US history 2, AP US history, food for thought class, which is super popular. We have a leadership and sports management, as well as regular PE and personal fitness, wind ensemble, chorus, band, music production, oh, we have Spanish, hola, Spanish 1, 2, 3, and 4. Our special ed services as well, dystopian literature course, an American Lit course. We're adding speech and debate. Don't forget our business courses with entrepreneurship, marketing, personal finance, our robotics, and our manufacturing, a business pathway that is just emerging with entrepreneurship and marketing, as well as personal finance, ceramics, and working in pottery, you've got painting.
So we have an array of internship opportunities, recently started in their senior year, but we're looking at having our students begin their internships before their senior year, and before that college process really starts, so they can get an opportunity to try on some different careers, to see what they like and which ones they don't.
We also, after school, offer BV Excel.
Which is a course catalog, if you will, of opportunities for students to try out different careers.
For instance, one of our students right now is taking welding, which isn't offered here, but he's doing that, and he's earning credit as he does it.
Video game design, video lab, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, just to name a few.
We have got great athletic teams that compete their hearts out. Chargers for Change, which is our social justice group, we have the GSA, we have newspaper, we have yearbook, we've got esports that are coming to you as well, so for our gamers out there, we've got something that you're going to like too. And then, we've got our world-class band. That's all you got to say about the Charger Band, it's just band.
We're a full one-to-one school, all of our classrooms are outfitted with new touchscreen devices.
All of the things that we've been doing fall under our Portrait of the Graduate. And the Portrait of the Graduate is the vision and mission of the high school.
So that's BMR. We embrace our traditions, we're proud of our past, but we're excited about our future.
Go Chargers!
Yay! It's so good.
So a draft.
Cool.
Just to try to get, generate some excitement and interest, and the focus trying to be on Jill, I mean, her energy is awesome. And the kids absolutely love that. So trying to really put her at the forefront to share out all the things that the school's doing.
So good. All the way, Jane popped in.
I did, sorry. Sorry for the delays, that was a nightmare.
Here's some candy if anybody needs a little sugar.
Yeah. Look at that.
All right.
If I try, if I say I can make 5:30, I can never get out of Dodge. If I say I'll make 6, I'm here by 5.
Oh, let me give it that, sorry, Carrie.
I do.
Sorry about that.
I need that.
Okay.
Now that we're primed up.
We're ready to go.
Yeah.
Did we buy a van? Or we didn't do that yet?
Did we what?
Buy a van?
No, that's at the end.
Oh, at the end. I can wait, I can hold my breath.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's so nice to be back here with you all. Before you arrived, we heard stories about sheep, special needs dogs, ducks, and all sorts of things. So we sort of broke the ice with a little laughter together and a little connection together. And we're going to work hard for the next couple of hours together. So thanks for having me back. I'm so excited to be here with you tonight to give you an update A on the work that we've done since the last time we were together in, I think it was September. So what's been going on in the district to develop Blueprint 2.0. The next objective is to get your feedback, your insight, and your suggestions on some areas of the Portrait of the Graduate and Blueprint 1.0, moving to Blueprint 2.0, because everyone's voice matters and counts. So that's how we're going to spend our time together tonight in Carrie's style. I want to make sure that we review our norms, start and end on time, use technology, not to look for cute videos of puppies, but only for the work of the meeting, be fully present because we need you, and then, of course, our values, equity, courage, collaboration, and clarity. Is there somebody who would be willing to keep me on track so that we're not here until 10:00 PM tonight? So that means being my timekeeper. I'll just holler out.
Sure.
Please put the timer on this many minutes. Thank you so much, Tim. Somebody willing to be our student advocate, so at the end, you can tell us how we did having conversations around the most important piece of our work, and that is students. Okay, good. Thank you, Amanda. And is there someone named Jason that would be willing to be our note taker?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Okay, all right. So the times might be a little bit off, don't worry, I know you're adding them up in your brain, and you're saying, well, that's going to be way past 8:30. We will make it work, this is just a frame. So we're going to start this evening with a little bit of catching you up. I want to teach you a little bit about the process, the progress, and then have you engage in some conversations and ask for clarity as needed. Then we're going to do a little bit of learning, so hopefully you've brought caffeine or had caffeine, because we're going to do a little bit.
We have chocolate.
Nice!
Chocolate syrup kisses, Hershey kisses.
Awesome.
Going around and around.
Yes, don't worry, I'm just like rambling here for a moment, then you can put that down.
So if you lose my interest, Carrie, I'm going for the chocolate.
All right, awesome! All right, perfect, perfect. So we're going to do a little bit of reading.
But you never do, so that means no chocolate for me.
All right, good. A little bit of reading, a little bit of discussion, and a little bit of forecasting next steps, and then we will close with a little feedback from me. So any questions about what we're going to do this evening between now and around 8:30? All right, turn to the person next to you, or a couple people next to you, and share what you hope to learn about the process that you don't know right now. Right? So.
The problem there is I don't know what I don't know.
Well, that's it, and I don't know what's been done since the last time we've been by.
So what are you curious about?
We haven't had any update.
Turn to the person sitting next to you and talk about what you're curious about.
I want to learn it. I want to know what's going on.
Not you again.
Not you again.
How'd it go last night?
Leadership. Stay.
Yes.
Okay, what do you hope to know down there that you don't already know? Erin, 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 no.
No, Tara.
Tara and Carrie, Lynn.
What the leadership team has already been doing.
Oh, what the leadership team has been up to related to Blueprint 1.0 transforming to 2.0. You want to learn.
We want to learn.
Just the process and learn. All right, down here.
I think how it's impacted students so far.
Nice, excellent. Okay, perfect. So, we don't need the documents in this folder just yet, we just need eyes on top. I'm going to take you down sort of memory lane since the last time we have been together. So, we have established what we're calling a steering committee. It's a group of folks that are in buildings, it's comprised of coaches, teachers, leaders, principal leaders, and folks from central office. They have been tasked with helping me to use data and gather information that will help us make Blueprint 2.0 stronger and better than we could ever imagine. Our rationale behind the strategic team, this is 45 minutes, by the way, see, this is what I do, Tim, this is exactly what I do. I just start rambling and I forget to tell you the time. The reason why Jason and I aren't doing this by ourselves is because everyone's voice matters, everyone's voice counts, everyone gets a say, but not everyone gets their way. Right? So it's about collaborating to come to consensus. So Amanda, do you have great eyes?
Sort of.
Sort of, all right. Would you mind reading out loud, because we can see it, but let's also read it, what we mean by strategic planning. And as she's reading, I want you to listen for key words or phrases that jump out to you. All right?
Strategic planning, a collaborative process that is used to determine priorities or focus, allocate resources, strengthen systems and structures, create alignment, build consensus, determine outcomes, and assess and adjust the organization's direction in response to the current realities. Effective strategic planning not only defines the future direction of the organization and the actions needed to ensure movement, but it also identifies how the organization will know it has met success.
All right, turn to the person sitting next to you. What word or phrase jumped out to you and why?
Collaborative. Effectives. Focus. Adjust.
Can I me you?
Can I give a word?
Determine outcomes.
Okay.
Effective.
You got a word?
Yeah.
Play the game.
Collaborative.
Same word?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, doing the same word.
Okay.
All right. Everybody got a word or a phrase?
I'm taking notes here.
Kind of sort of.
Especially gobbles not near.
All right, Amanda, what's your word or phrase?
Effective.
Why effective?
Because being within a timeframe in a school system, whatever you're doing is not, it has to be effective.
That's right. It has to have impact, and it has to have impact on our clients, and our clients are the students that we serve. And it has to have a positive impact in a certain period of time. Otherwise, it's just words on paper. All right? Left or right?
Left.
Create alignment, build consensus, determine outcomes, and assess, adjust the organization's direction.
Well, you have a lot of words that you like.
You're wordy, Tim. You are wordy.
You like all those words.
He's a super highlighter.
Explain to you, play the game.
Why do you love all those words, or like them?
Because at first, when I first heard it, when Amanda read over it, I wrote down create consensus and built in alignment. Because if we don't come to a consensus in what we're doing and along the path that we need to work, we can't align what we need to align. So that entire phrase to me says, this is what we have to do to get where we, or get from where we're at to where we want to be, and to get a buy-in from everybody.
And without alignment, we create confusion. We create confusion for the people who work with us, the people who work for us, and we create confusion for our students. And that's not right. Right? So we have to be aligned, and we have to be collaborative and open to having interesting dialogue, sometimes that push each other's thinking, and we're in that process right now, and it's super healthy. All right, Ms. Jane?
I said collaborative.
All right.
And I will say that I was a little bit, not disappointed, not even taken aback, but when you described the planning group, the steering committee, that it didn't have a student on it.
It is going to have a student on it, I believe.
Okay.
We have a representative.
They do.
Yes.
I just got an email from her, actually.
Oh, good. All right. But yes, super important, and keep pushing on that, Ms. Jane.
I will.
Because that's really important to get their voice. All right, Jason?
I said collaborative as well.
All right. All right, keep going, any other words?
I said determining outcomes, because at the end of the day, we're spending resources, many resources, on the blueprint. And at the end of the day, what matters is the outcome.
That's right. That's right. You can have a pretty piece of paper, it can be shiny, it can be slick.
Have a great plan if you don't follow it.
But if you don't have an outcome with action steps that we measure and hold each other accountable to, then, okay, so what? Right? Right?
I said adjust, because I think if there's anything we've learned the last couple of years, is that we have to constantly be adjusting to whatever needs of the students in front of us at that time.
That's right. So I like to think of the blueprint as bounded autonomy, right? Here's the structure that we have to live within, but the data drives how we make those quarter turns and tweaks to meet the needs of the people that are right in front of us. So we're not going to put it on a stone, right? We're going to monitor impact every four to six weeks, once this rolls out, to say what's working, what's not, and what are we going to do about both.
And I went with effective planning, so same idea, is that it gets you those outcomes.
Nice, excellent. All right, so we're going to skip this, because this is your work. And I'm going to take you down memory lane. So our first meeting with the steering committee was on January 19th. Prior to that, we had had meetings with leadership team. Remember that the steering committee is comprised of teachers, union folks, need a student, get a student, principals, et cetera, et cetera, who are engaging in these really rich conversations we meet after school, because we don't want to take them out of the classroom, because that's where they need to be during the school day. The first thing that we did, and we can provide this to you, I'm sure, as a hyperlink, because you can't see a 12 font on the TV, but I pulled together all of the data that we collected from you in September, from MCAS data, from STAR assessments, from anecdotal conversations with leadership, and I tried to provide some numbers so that folks could get a sense of where we were right now, as well as some anecdotal information that kept coming up again, and again, and again, and again, and again, regarding where we're at as a district, and where people hope to be moving forward. The one thing that kept coming up was this idea of a North Star, at least that's what I call it, and the need and the desire to think about what Jane has opened in front of her, as the portrait of the graduate being the North Star for all the students in Blackstone Millville. Like, that's what we're working for when they're three years old. That's what we're striving for when they're in third grade. That creates what Tim says, is this idea of alignment and connection among all the schools for the kiddos that we serve. So that was the first thing that we did. And then, we took out Blueprint 1.0. And we had a look at the vision, and transparency is super important, I know, and so I'm going to be transparent here and say, many people didn't really know.
That we had a vision?
What the vision was. Well, they knew we had one, but it was, you know, like, oh, I haven't looked at that in a while. So, we did a little unpacking of the vision, and we asked ourselves these questions. Is our vision current? Is the vision too big or too small? Is the vision Brené Brown clear, because clear is kind? Has the vision been communicated ad nauseam until you say, stop telling me the vision, I have it memorized in my brain? And is the vision still compelling? So, they had to sort of work through, highlight, think about, unpack, argue a little bit about the vision, and then they came up with several recommendations, and this is just sloppy, copy pieces of their work. They tasked me with, let me go back to this one, they tasked me with taking all of their notes and turning it into some sort of a draft vision, which we then looked at in the second meeting. But they were really bound and determined to remind the group that all means all. So what they noticed was that equity was probably not highlighted in the original vision, and so they wanted that to be highlighted this time, and I know you're looking confused.
No, not confused, comparing.
Well, because this is their draft.
Understood.
Okay, good. All right, you want to read it out loud?
Sure. The vision, "The Blackstone Millville School District supports the development of lifelong learners with a focus on leadership, communication, collaboration, civic responsibility, and creativity, founded in the development of something, and all means all."
Now, trip, find your portrait of a graduate.
Well, that's what I was trying to do, and compare.
And see, and see if you see anything in the portrait of a graduate that's also in this thing.
Well, sure, the headings. But here's the thing, and I'm going to say it, and I've said it before, and I'll say it a million times, we are in the business of education. And I know that this says development of lifelong learners. I know that it says it, I know that's a buzzword of the 80s, 90s, 2000s, and 2010s, and clearly 2020. But no, that word, education, does not appear up there.
You were in the second meeting, listening in.
I was, well, see, you know, the person who just like sued somebody because they had a listening device in that one?
Yeah.
I have them everywhere. Is this being recorded?
They, they, they actually said, after they mulled over this, we don't like that word anymore. And so, we have a new draft coming up here in a little bit. All right, so any questions so far about the process? All right, let's keep going. So one of the things that we are committed to doing is not keeping the steering committee a secret committee, right? This is a group of people who represent the wider community, and so, we are practicing crafting leadership messages that Jason then sends out to the entire staff. And so, this was our attempt at the first leadership message. And then, we also are providing surveys to people, like, this is what we were thinking about, what do you think of this? And then, they're giving us feedback about that, too, because we can't have every person that works for the district in these steering committee meetings, but we certainly want everyone's voice represented. So they had fun doing that, and they thought it was really kind of hard, actually, like, how can you tell the story of what we've done for two hours in just a few sentences?
Yes.
And they had to grapple with it, and they had to come up with it. So now, they're telling their principals, we need to do that in our own buildings, so it's transferring over a little bit. All right, so then, we just met February 9th, and it was a continuation of the first steering committee meeting, but we were digging in deeper to the purpose, action, values, and So, here is the second draft of their vision. Carrie, you want to read that one?
Working draft vision, "Every Blackstone Millville Regional School District scholar graduates equipped and empowered to be a responsible and productive citizen in a diverse and competitive world."
So, that's their second version. Turn to the person sitting next to you and respond to that.
That one's better.
You do?
That sounds questionable.
I like the second part, the difference in competitive.
Me too.
I like that.
I like that part, too.
I like that part.
Well, and I like responsible, productive, but maybe we.
Regional School District scholar.
I like the word empowered. Yes. I like it, but it's.
Responsible and productive.
Education. It's definitely more assertive.
Yes. Pushes forward pretty hard.
Right, which I like.
Yeah, it's focused on, it's focused on the end result, and not focused on the process.
Yeah. It feels high school, not like.
That's true.
Full district.
Yeah.
Okay, let's plus delta this. What are a couple of things that you like? We need the feedback, Jason, so try to get these thoughts down.
Yep.
What do we like? Or what do we think? I don't like that word. I shouldn't have said like.
What stands out?
Yeah. What do we think is positive? What's a strength of that?
The word empowered.
Why do you say that?
I feel like we're giving some of the power to the students to craft their own path forward.
Yes. Our job is to work ourselves out of a job.
Yeah.
To give them all the tools they need to be successful, to empower them. All right, keep going, another strength?
I do like responsible, productive citizen in a diverse and competitive world.
What makes you say that?
I think it defines, it nicely defines the world they will see. Perhaps not the world we live in now.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, well, it is a diverse world, it is a competitive world, but I think in a community that's very homogeneous, that's often hard to see.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if you call it out, it has power.
Okay. What are some opportunities to make it better? Not necessarily that it's bad, but, oh, can you think about this? For example, a principal does not like the word scholar.
I was just going to say, I don't prefer the word scholar. It is an appropriate use, but, and I think back to, it was you that said it right, back to Tara's point, that it feels very year 12.
Yes.
Very higher education.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't like the word equipped. Like, we're going to.
I feel like there could be a better word.
And pack their bag, and here's your bag.
Educated?
You've got your tools.
Educated.
You use educated instead of equipped.
Graduated, educated and empowered. Write that down, because I'll never remember that, but it's really good. Any other opportunities?
We're talking about scholar, and you come up with an idea to replace that, I'm just thinking, as you, I would think back to student, my thought just a second ago was learner, because we have learners, we don't have, you know, individuals, we do have individuals, but you know.
It's so interesting, because a new body of research, Tim, just came out that said, it used to be critical thinking was like the be-all, end-all, like, that was the top tier, if you could get to that place, then kiddos were ready. Now, it's learner above critical thinking, because you want to graduate individuals who are excited about continuing to learn.
Young learners.
So, that's great.
You have to learn every day.
Right, yes.
I don't, I don't really want them out critically thinking if they haven't learned. I feel like overall, I do, I like the statement, and what I noticed in the other ones is the previous versions felt like it could be any vision statement on any corporate office in any place. They had those buzzwords, and that, I'm really tired of seeing, and I don't think apply. I do feel like this is a very powerful assertive statement. I, I'm not sure educator would make sense if you remove and empowered. I don't think that sentence would make sense, or educated and empowered, educated to be a responsible member. But I feel like some of the words could be finessed a little bit to not seem so, this is what we do.
Good feedback.
In thinking about this, we have to be able to think about, from the special ed children, all the way across the broad spectrum, to the AP students that do nothing but AP.
That's right.
But, keep going, keep going.
It's just.
But we can intellectually stimulate anybody.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yes.
So maybe it's my word, but I do believe we have to shoot for 100% graduation, all means all, I do believe that. But maybe it's that.
And we'll keep grappling with it with your feedback, and then we'll bring it back to you, right?
Yeah. So this is the current draft, there's not another?
There is another one that's, I think, sloppier, but I might not have it in my notes yet.
But this is what we're going to work off of.
To, yeah, okay, yeah.
My other thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
I mean to speak out of turn?
No, 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 it's good.
Um, my other thought of, my initial thought of replacing scholar would be member.
Member?
Yes, because we are members of this whole group. And I feel like that doesn't just encumber these students.
Then you could be talking about the staff and then you don't graduate them. So then the word graduate doesn't work.
Graduates makes it specific to the students.
But I do think there is a piece missing. When we only talk, you know, and again, the first one used all these words. Communication, this one uses none of those words.
Right, and it's gonna bring some of those words still in.
I, I have a problem with just using diverse because it's too vague. It's culturally and ethnically diverse. We don't just live in a diverse society. There are too many too many adjectives to leave out.
All good. Alright. But are we pretty proud of our steering committee? After school, two meetings, got from A to B, and now we're gonna get to C with your help, right? Yeah. I'm pretty proud of them. It was scary for them. Like, what, you want me to touch this?
Well, I mean, they went from six sentences to one.
Yeah.
Right. That's pretty good. But I do like that.
Yeah.
They definitely thought outside of the box.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Alright, so then we looked at, on the blueprint, the purpose or work and action and our core values. So we decided, or they decided, we don't need the purpose if the vision is strong. Because the purpose really is the vision and we're just like kind of adding more words. Right? They also said, we don't necessarily need, this is what, this is their thinking, the work and action, because that should come out in our objectives and our priorities. And they were thinking that our core values should actually be
Should be these.
Should be.
These.
Yes. That makes perfect sense.
So they're thinking, we want to make the best vision statement in the state of Massachusetts so that we can get rid of eight thousand words, purpose or work and action. Underneath that, put the core values. Respond to that.
I like it. It's very succinct.
So I never liked happy, healthy, just so you know, but that didn't come from us.
It'd be nice if they are, but
It would be a nice thing. But I, I, I do think just having core values and not having a statement of, of, even though the vision, so you have a vision, you also have a mission. Those are two different, you know, it's the commercial. It's the one soundbite and then it's the mission of what we do. So you could argue that our mission is our portrait of a graduate. I could make that argument. That's all great. But I still think none of that hits the all means all and educating our our youth of our community. Like, none of that does that.
I like what you were saying, Jane, about we could argue this, because if we can shape this into the blueprint to somehow say, if we commit as a community to do X, then, and drag it back to the vision statement, then all our students or every student or whatever we decide to say will whatever we decide to say. But we have to have an if then.
Correct.
Their thinking was, or when then.
When then, whatever, but yeah.
They're thinking that they don't, it doesn't need to be separate, because then people get lost in the weeds.
I agree with that. I just, I think
Somewhere it has to be there.
Something needs to attach A to B.
That's right. That's right. What do you think of core values being that and not let, like, let's pick different core values?
So community still, well, is civic responsibility. Achievement, again, is not, is not there. Like, education is not there. Success, whatever. Leadership is, communication is, collaboration is. Civic responsibility is, creativity is, but achievement or success or which is very hard to define, but it's, it's missing. And in an educational environment, I'm bothered that it's missing.
Yeah. So how can we weave that into?
I feel like, you know, when I take this project on with some of my clients, you know, it's, so it's, it's everything, you have a company and this is what they do. They are an engineering firm, okay, and they have a vision. And they have core values. But those are how they get what they do done. So in most of those cases, I would argue, we don't repeat that. So educating is, is what we do. This is how we do it and what we're expecting the outcome to be, so
But nothing says that's what we do.
Does it have to?
But just because we have school after our name or school district after our name, doesn't mean, I mean, I, I have to wager a guess that something in the material of your manufacturers says they're manufacturers. You know, that they're doing
But it's not in their vision or core values.
Hmm, I would argue that probably is there somewhere.
All good conversation, right? We have to be able to have this blueprint stand on its own without Jason standing, you know, next to it to say, we'd like to explain this to you and fill in the gaps, right? It has to tell the story. So, good point, good point. Good conversation to take back to the steering committee, and I know Jason put it in his notes. Awesome.
Twenty minutes.
How many minutes?
Twenty.
Oh, I thought you said two. I'm like, holy cannoli. Alright, so then, oh, this is our, don't worry about how ugly this is, because this is our sloppy copy of the work. We work right in here. So that was us getting to the place where we said, okay, let's get rid of the
Who, what, when, digit spinner.
Yeah, all that. Okay? Alright. Okay, so
Don't want me tonight.
Objective. Who'd like to read that out loud? Because the objective is what we went to next, and I know no one can see it really. Anyone want to read that?
I can read.
Okay.
I, I can read.
Yay!
Objective. An objective should serve as a bridge between a big, bold vision and the steps needed to achieve that vision. Objectives create agreed upon boundaries that will keep the district focused on the main thing. An objective is most effective when it can be measured in statistical or observable data.
Okay, lots of big fancy words. Turn to the person sitting next to you. What does that mean? Don't say the words or phrases. What in the world does that mean? Is it an objective again? It's your goal.
A measurable step.
And it has to be achievable.
Sounds like an IEP.
But, but again, here I'll point out that we say our objectives have to be focused on the main thing. But our mission and our vision don't say what the main thing is. They say all these things.
Okay. Uh-oh, someone's breaking out the chocolate. What does that mean?
Uh-oh!
Only Jane said it was
Only I said.
Okay.
Only I said if you were looking.
It's a process.
Alright, con. So
It's more of a process than
What is an objective?
The who, what, when, where, how, why.
I'm thinking of it from, from what I'm getting out of it, out of the text, I'm getting a process. Whereas an objective is a stated object or a stated destination. And I'm not getting a stated destination out of what's written.
Because this, the destination is
Those objectives.
Is, is, is somewhere. Right there? No. Keep going. Right there. Well, that's not it, but that's the destination.
Right.
That's where we're getting to.
And the objectives are the process.
The objective is the stated measurable goals of how we're going to get there. Alright, what we need to pack, who needs to be on the bus, what kind of clothes we need to bring with us, who's gonna get the mats ready? It's all of those things to get to that destination. That's why the vision is so important, because if we screw that up, then that's not good.
Then we don't have alignment. Who used that word?
Alright, so by this time in session two of the steering committee, it was pretty late. And so we had small groups take each objective that's on your blueprint, starting with the what, the how, the whole child and the community, and unpack them to first say, well, are these really objectives? Are they measurable? Are they attainable, specific, aligned, timely, all of those things? Because if we go back to the definition of an objective, is it has to be able to be measured. Okay, so at this point, most people were just starting to take notes in small groups. You can see those questions. Is it still current? Is it too big or too small? Is it clear? Have the objectives been communicated well and often with others? And is it still compelling? So they started to have those conversations. And then they said, you've kept us over by ten minutes. We want to go now. So that's where we stopped, and now we're here today. So any questions about the process thus far? Any worries about the process thus far, besides we need a student?
Carrie, you know what's interesting? It's not a worry. It's, it's just a, maybe it is a worry. I had a conversation today with a few staff members that were, were wondering, I'm trying to phrase this correctly, that were concerned and wondering why it seems as though all four buildings are doing the same work. So we were having a conversation about our district blueprint, which the staff knows, you know, they're aware of it. They understand that they get it and the school, and how the school improvement plans are all connected back to the blueprint. And the work that's happening within each building is still unique to the school, but the focus areas are all predominantly the same. There seemed to be some thinking that, that was potentially a challenge for staff to get their heads around. That, that, and I was trying to articulate that we're all moving in the same direction. That, right, so while the work is unique to the building, the district is not a, a system of individual schools. We are a school system, right, we're kind of moving in the same direction. That was, that was an interesting conversation. And it made me think about how many other people are thinking about that question and not asking? And when you just, as we were kind of working through this, it's making me think about how we help our colleagues kind of get their arms around that. So
The whole communication piece is really critical. How do we communicate this? How do we help them understand the why? All of those pieces and parts are gonna be really important.
And how do you get buy-in? Because the vision is no good if people don't
That's right.
Buy into it.
That's right. That's why every time we meet, we're gonna communicate every step of the way. And people can choose to lean in or not, but we are gonna make sure that we're in their face with all due respect. Right? Again and again and again, this is where we're at. We need your input. How's it sound? What do you think? Give us feedback. So there are no surprises in June, right, when we get to that point. So we are moving on to the next part of our agenda, sir, amazing timekeeper. How are we doing advocating for students thus far?
I feel like we are.
Five is perfect. Get filmed, and zero is turn the, turn the camera off.
I feel like we're around a four.
What makes you say that?
We have work to do. Well, if we were at a five, then we wouldn't be here giving feedback.
Yes. Alright, what do you think? Good? Alright, alright, everybody good? Alright, so now we're gonna do something super fun, and that's read. And you said, I can read. I wanna read. So Jason was kind enough to paperclip an article that I think is very timely for the work that we're doing. Future focused strategic planning for schools, the what, the why, and the how. So we're gonna do this in partners, and we're gonna have a total of twelve minutes. At the end of, so you can jigsaw if you want. At the end of twelve minutes, you need to then have a conversation that will take five minutes, so twelve plus five is seventeen, around what's the gist of this? Like, what's important for us to know as we move the work forward? Okay, so twelve plus five is seventeen. You cannot get with a partner that you've talked to already tonight by a turn and talk. So stand up, go find yourself a partner, take the article with you, take something to just highlight away, and twelve plus five, and we'll see you in seventeen minutes. Move about the library. Is that right, Jason?
Yeah, they're seventeen.
Okay, Oten's gonna go find somebody. Awesome. It's good to get up and move. Okay, what's the gist? Let's see, what group wants to go first? Amanda, your group want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Obviously, a strategic plan is the plan. Just as that ultimately, it needs to be future focused. Right there in the heading. And flexible.
Uh-huh.
By that, we mean. We also feel that it's student based, and again, it comes back to not, not always acknowledging that it's, like, the students need to be in part of this.
That's right. Because they're our client. Anything else to add from that group?
We said the, the future focus aligns with the work we're doing with capital planning as well. We keep talking about the need for a new building that has to be focused towards the future. It has to be flexible and adaptable. And the kids have to take ownership of that space as we move forward.
Nice, nice. It's hard to, or it's easy to get stuck in the muck of the here and now and lose sight of the North Star. And if the strategic plan is not a North Star and not a compelling North Star, it will become dusty paper or a dusty Google lock or whatever is the modern term for something now. Right? Alright, next group?
I don't, um, I think one of the things that was, I picked up on kind of attaches to what Jason's comment was, that this is really saying that you need a strategic plan for each building, that it should be different. Interesting. So, you know, the fact that that's what a staff person brought up, and then when we read this article, I mean, I think that was a, a thread that wove through every single section, that it was really a school-based plan.
Yes, and so here's how I thought about that, was that the district has to have the end game.
Right, the overarching vision.
Yes, and then each school, we call it a school improvement plan, but each school has a plan of supporting that overarching vision. Because otherwise, you're not gonna get buy-in. Because ultimately, the vision is gonna feel high school-ish, because that's our end game, right? But if the, if Millville doesn't have their own school improvement plan, they'll be like, well, guess what? I mean, they wouldn't be like this, but some schools would be like this. That's their problem, because that belongs to them. That's their vision. So that's why every school, point well taken, needs a school improvement plan.
But not separate and apart.
Oh, no. All lined up to the North Star.
All feeding up to the org chart of students.
That's why the strategic planning team, my papers are out of order, wants the blueprint this to be owned, starting at pre-K.
Right.
In fact, there's super early conversations that they want there to be layers of this portrait of a graduate, like, this is the one that we're striving for for high school. And then behind it is the middle school and the elementary school, so it's like a layered game because
And one feeds into the other.
That's right, yes. So I'm not supposed to be talking, and that's what I do, all the talking. Alright, did I interrupt your group? No.
We're good.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so we, we went also on the, that it needs to be agile, dynamic. So it needs to be dynamic, not static. Can't be written and then sit on a fence. And that everyone, we went to the all means all, but we went further than the all in the students means all, all in the community means all. And so our, our government has to see themselves, our townspeople have, our senior citizens have to see themselves, and people have to own their roles. They have to own that they are a part of something and they make that something happen. So if, if we want, if, if they want this, they have to be a part of this. They have to see themselves in it. They have to own it. They have to, to, they have to have buy-in. We did pick up on the, each school based their own, but I did go with that school improvement. I like the idea of using the word talent development, empowering and inspiring. Because I like that they said teachers and students. Because one of the things I think we hear a lot about lately is a, you know, unhappy, which I don't think is true when you talk to individual people, but we hear about this unhappy faculty kind of thing. And so I think if we're developing talent to stay and thrive, then it's talent for the teachers and the students. And then last thing, I would love to steal their words, because I love this sentence. "We change agents in a world of..." And I would say diverse challenges. I like those words.
So how can this conversation... Influence is not the right word. Provide guidance to us? What are like two or three things we need to remember that I can take back to the steering committee? Like, okay, this is super important. Based on our conversations.
I think the biggest thing is the last item on here, the student voice and the student agency. I think there needs to be more than that. And I'm not sure that one student is enough.
Right.
And one of the things that we were discussing is if... It was a long time ago. It feels like forever. But our last meeting, when we looked at all the data of the feedback from students and teachers, and our largest concern was the students that said they did not feel emotionally safe or physically safe or the things they were worried about. They're the ones we need to hear from. How do we help them?
How do we hear? How do we listen, hear, and understand the place from which five-year-olds, 10-year-olds, 17-year-olds come from? Because I'm not going to return to my hair salon if my hairstylist doesn't hear that she needs to cover up my gray, right? I'll just go somewhere else. All right? So, same thing. Students, if you don't hear, listen, hear, and understand, then they're going to feel slighted.
But I also do want to get the message to the people developing this, and I hope that it does include students, that they need to see themselves in this. They... This can't just be, "Our students will blah, 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 blah." "Our students will blah, 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 blah." That they need to be in this picture, or that they need to develop their talents, the talents of their colleagues that are sitting across the way. And they need to engage in their community. And the students need to engage in their community. And we, as a school committee, need to engage in our community. And our community needs to engage with us.
Yes. All right. So that's one thing we need to remember. What's something else we need to... That voice, Matt. Student voice, student agency. That matters probably the most important.
Yep.
What's the second thing we need to remember?
It has to be a dynamic plan. It can't be every three years or every, you know... It has to... This steering committee needs to be an ongoing...
Yes.
Whether that's in the... Whether it's in the leadership teams or, you know, the coaching team or whatever it is. But it just always continually needs to be. Are we on target? Are we missing a beat? Has the world changed?
Our advice is every four to six weeks, we bring out the plan. We say what's working, what's not, and what we're going to do about both, right? All the time.
Right.
That's not meaning we're going to rewrite the entire thing. It means we're going to make slight adjustments based on what the data is saying. Otherwise, it just becomes a piece of paper.
Right.
Okay? Third point that we want to remember or give to the back of the steering committee for advice. And there might not be a third.
I've got a lot of things that I've underlined throughout this article. But in that, and the third thing is the first sentence under "rolled out in stages." It has to be concise and actionable and rolled out in stages so that it's clear what the focus is at each stage. We can't just give them a mission statement and say, "These are your objectives. Go and do." The first quarter of the year, we've got to focus on one thing.
That's right.
The second quarter, you know, something else.
Yeah, because...
We can't just have one overall goal. We've got to build the sub-goals to build up to the main goal. And it's the same thing with the schools. Each individual school will contribute to the overall goal for the district. But it has to do it in its own way.
Yeah. Would we agree? Small incremental goals lead to big change, lead to sustainable, lasting change. And we're not going to have to have a strategic plan where we have to Google a term. Clear is super kind, right? Everybody should be able to access it without an interpreter and understand what it means and why we're doing this. Right? That's why it will not be 7,000 pages long, because no one's going to look at that. But it will be robust enough that we are clear on the direction that we're going.
And it has to be fiscally sustainable. We are running into an era that is taxing the already overtaxed.
Yes.
And we have to find ways to do it bigger, better, cheaper.
With the resources that we have.
That we have.
That we have.
That likely won't grow.
Not with the resources we have, with less than the resources we have. Because the budget will cut more next year.
Got it.
Because the cost of living next year is going to be more.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. And a lot of that, just simply about further aligning...
Anybody watching this that's on our staff must be so stressed right now, listening to this conference, because it's like, "It's got to be bigger. It's got to be bolder. It's got to be cheaper." They're probably like, "Oh, my God."
It's got to be doable. It's got to be manageable. It's got to be...
You know, I'm listening and I'm not disagreeing. It's just, it feels like a task that our staff is probably...
Well, and that's, you know, people are fried. They are working harder with less. We are all working harder with less. And how do we... And so when I say fiscal sustainability, I also mean sustainability.
Right. A human resource.
How do we... Yeah. How do we... How do we stop the everybody, you know, resign train that's going on around the country? Not just here. You know, education is hard. Call it frontline. Call it whatever you want. But people are tired. People are angry. People are frustrated. And yet, you know, how do we sustain the positive morale of what you're doing matters?
I just read an Ed Week or Ed report or Ed something that 46% of the workforce is thinking about leaving the profession.
Yep.
Think about that. Forty-six percent of the workforce is thinking about leaving the profession. When you look on the bench, there are not that many people waiting to come in.
That's true.
Right? And so we have to think about sustainability from every lens, from the fiscal, from the human, from the stuff. And I would argue, and I leaned in today when I was meeting with a little subgroup of the steering committee and said, "We can't ask anybody to work harder, but we can ask people to work smarter." And so there are some things and some practices that we do because we've always done it, and it's not giving us an impact. And that's why we get frustrated.
And that same note, Carrie, as we did with some teachers today, we were talking about some of the challenges and the frustrations and the barriers. And we were looking at some of the student growth that we were looking at before the workshop. And, you know, their eyes kind of bugged out of their head because our SGP is almost... It's over 60 in almost every area, right? So the students are making amazing gains. But something one of the teachers said to me was so interesting, which was, "I hear that. I see it. I get it. But I still feel like we have a long way to go. I don't have any more left to give, and I'm not sure how to do this better." And so we had the conversation of, "Why are you feeling that what you're doing isn't good enough?" And it was hard. It was a very hard conversation with a couple of folks I was talking with today. And I'm so grateful for the discussion with their couple of classroom teachers that have a good pulse, you know?
Yes.
And it was an overall sense of, "We don't know how to do this better." And I kept pushing that. "I don't know that you need to do it better." Because the direction we're moving in, which the committee will see when we... In our March meeting. But we're starting to get some really nice results in a lot of places.
For sure.
So it was just, it was interesting. Because how much of that... That led to a conversation we were having, a burnout. So how much of that isn't like... It actually isn't about that. They're just burnt out.
Right.
And fried. And how do you replenish?
Yes. Yes.
And I think it's about streamlining. I think there's a lot of initiatives, and there's a lot of demand from the state, from, you know, from everyone, from every side. And it's about streamlining things into what you're already doing versus adding it as a separate thing.
That's right.
You know, and I feel that way when we talk about, you know, looking at the whole child and talking about the social, emotional part of things. I have many conversations every day with IEP teams. And it's like, "Well, no, we can't create another thing for this kid to worry about or for a teacher to worry about. But while they have them in their class, what can we do to create that relationship or whatever it is while you're already there? Why does it have to be a separate thing? We don't have time for 20 separate things in a day."
That's right.
So it's like, how do you streamline some of these initiatives and goals so that you're not... It's not individual things that they feel like are... The tasks are stacked on top of each other. How do we, you know, change sort of the mindset of... It's not something different. You've been working on social, emotional things your whole life. And that's what teachers do. We're calling it something else, but this is what it really means.
This is what it really means. Right.
So...
That's right. That's why I'm so... You should be so proud of the work that you've done with Portrait of a Graduate, because it does help to make sense of... Oh, well, that's where... Oh, yeah, it helps with leadership. Oh, yeah, that helps with, right? To have that as a visual and part of our belief system is going to be really important. So Tammy, high school teacher. Read the room. Do we need a five-minute run-around-the-room break? Or do... Will Jason say, "No, just keep forging ahead"?
I think we probably need a break. Restock our drinks. Go to the ladies' men's room.
All right. How many minutes, Tammy, high school teacher?
Couple minutes, I think.
Couple.
I don't know. Five?
Five. Five.
An old lady, it takes me a while just to do what I got to do.
Start running, because when you come back, you got to mark stuff up.
All right.
You get to pick, all right? So you're going to pull out the blueprint and the Portrait of a Graduate.
All right.
And I'm going to tell you the task, and then you get to pick where you want to go. All right? So one of the things we're trying to do with Portrait of a Graduate is look at the indicators, which are awesome. They're on the front and back, under each pillar. And we need smart people like you who are willing to look at those indicators to see if any of them can be combined or shortened in a fashion so that, at the end of the day, there's not so many. Okay? So we need people who like to do that kind of stuff. Then, your next option is you have to like Jason, because you're going to sit with him. All right?
He's the one.
Can we sit, or are we going to have a standing?
Standing.
And we're going to look at the priorities. And we're going to mark these babies up. Like, "Oh, well, we haven't... I don't know anything about that. Jason, did we do that? How's that going? Is that done? We need to add something?" You're going to mark it up so that Jason's going to give me the marked-up paper so I can give it to the steering committee so that when we're ready, we can make new priorities.
Y'all need to do that one.
Okay? So, synthesizing, mark it up. Like Jason, mark it up.
Is there a third option?
Go for drinks?
Yeah. Let's go, Carrie.
All right. So...
I don't even drink.
I don't either. Jason's an overachiever. Don't start yet. All right. So if that's our... If that's our task, high school teacher, how long do we need to synthesize and mark it up? Knowing that Jason said we have 11.
Jason was completely wrong. I don't... Well, this is kind of long. This is a lot. What did you sign this time?
In my brain, I thought 20 minutes, In my brain, I thought twenty minutes. Cause I knew you were smart.
Okay, I mean, then we can reevaluate and negotiate.
All right, so, but you're, you told me that you don't like it when the timer goes off and we add more time.
Well.
Cause it messes your.
No, I don't like when people ignore the timer.
Okay.
You gotta re-snowledge it.
All right, so do I have any takers who are willing to take this copy and go over here?
This is not all of you all.
Tammy, how much time do we get to report in?
Oh, we have the report?
I mean, it's just, no, you don't have to read everything. I'll tell you how we're gonna, we're gonna give like a health update.
She's a fast talker.
Two minutes.
It's quick.
For both of us?
Five minutes total.
Or five minutes total?
Done.
Five total.
Okay, all right, so here's what we want. We don't want what you've done to it, we want a health report. Is the document in ICU? Does it just need some frequent visits to the chiropractor? Or is it healthy and just leave it alone? So just that kind of a summary, okay?
Uh, it needs work.
Is it nine-one-one?
Well, I, I think it's overly wordy, unnecessarily wordy. Um, I mean, I, I think that, you know, so educators could read this, but, um, I think students are, we're gonna, they're gonna pass out.
Or, or Grandma Jones.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it still feels a bit heavy with our edits. I mean, if I had longer than that, I would probably rewrite most of it in a much more, um, conversational tone.
And bullet, bullet, bulletproof models.
I asked them, for those of you who didn't do that, I asked them to read it like a ninth grader. And do, without somebody interpreting it for you. Do you know what, because this is what, what I have to do.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's posted for the student, right?
We're closer. I'm not sure we're quite at a ninth grader yet, but we're much closer.
But did you write feedback so that the steering committee looks at it? All right, you can either take a picture of it and give me the picture, or if you trust me by taking the document, okay.
I'm good with that.
I promise I won't write upon, write on it or change it in any fashion.
Oh, you can.
You can. All right.
It's a work in progress.
Right. Okay, how about the blueprint? Is it, is it in critical condition, going to the chiropractor, or good as it is?
No, I think it's going to the chiropractor. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
You're being kind, I was gonna say quadruple bypass.
Do we still have a who, what, where, why, where?
We got them all.
All right.
Yeah, I, there's, so much of the work has been accomplished. And we were talking about reframing it as an ongoing, condensing some of the priorities into one. And, and one, you know, the whole child piece, we thought needs just a whole rewrite because we're just in a different place. And the community piece really is that work in progress and taking this idea that we're all ambassadors. We have to have an active approach to the, to the community piece of the work.
I think with the community piece too, we need to not only be looking to engage parents, grandparents, but Mrs. Jones, who never had children, but she still wants to know what's happening in our school system. Or, you know, when they're sitting at Betty's, having their coffees in the morning, their conversation about the school is a positive one.
This goes back to something Jane and I talked about. Everyone's a stakeholder in our community and in our respective communities because they pay taxes. Everyone that owns a home pays taxes to the school system, to the towns, and in so doing pays taxes to the schools to support the schools. Whether they have children in the system, whether they're grandparents, they just moved to town. Everyone has a stake in what goes on in the system.
And I would go even further than that. It's not just, not even just taxpayers, but renters or visitor. People should feel proud that they're in a community that has this district. And that should show when grandma comes to visit or Uncle George comes and the kids say to their cousins, well, at our school, X, Y, Z.
Yes.
We have, this has to have pride attached to it. Have to get that back.
All right, so how much fun was that work? How do we do advocating for students?
I feel like we've done better with it. I think we still have some work to do. I think there could be some more students involved.
For sure. But in that conversation we just had?
Yes.
Yes. We didn't focus on what was good for grown people. We focused on what's good for kids. So, we are down to our last part here. Um, the, okay, so what, now what? Um, what are our, either our or our next steps as a result of today? You get up to three, no more than three, and you can have one. For example, should someone on the school committee sit on the steering committee?
Interesting you say that. Yes, they should. Yes, they should. But I also know that someone on the school committee should sit on, is sitting on the Capitol, is sitting on the.
When does this one meet? Does this one meet during the day?
It meets after school from three to four-thirty. And I will send, Jason has all the dates, but, so we can alert you of those dates. And maybe it's everyone takes a turn. So it's not like this commitment. Oh, wait, hold on, sorry. I can tell you the dates right here. Maybe. Uh, why does that say three?
It's back, yeah, it read.
It went upside down somehow.
Strangely.
I don't know why it looks like that. All right, so we have one on three-twenty-two, or three-two.
It's three-twenty-three.
Three-twenty-three.
Three-two, what do we have that night?
Joint meeting.
Joint meeting.
That's a Wednesday.
They're all Wednesdays?
All Wednesdays.
Four-thirteen. I can't read what the next one says.
Five-four.
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 And five-twenty-five.
Five-twenty-five, I'm proposing in red, a joint family session with the school committee and the steering committee meeting in the same space to look at the final draft, kind of thing. But we can pick a different date. I don't know why I picked six-twenty-two, but at some point presenting to the school committee.
Is that our meeting or?
No, I just made that.
Random date.
I made it up. So, those are the dates. Why is that Tuesday? I don't know, cause I.
That's my theater night.
You what?
That's my theater night. It hits, it hits like.
I'm still at work during that time block, so I'm out.
Yeah, I.
And no one has to, but you're invited. How about we say that?
We have school committee on June twenty-third.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, June twenty-third.
Yeah.
I didn't go that far ahead. I mean, it might be something I just can't do every Wednesday that you guys have listed there.
I am.
But if you could come every now and again, that would be so awesome.
I'm happy to be involved as a community member.
Awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Jane.
Oh, yeah, wait.
No one pulled papers, did they?
Where does it meet?
Not that I know of. I, I wrote to town clerk, but she hasn't responded.
Yeah.
As far as you know, no one.
As of last week, no one had.
Yeah.
Are there any other next steps that this group should, could, or wants to take?
I mean, everything we talked about are steps, right? So it's, everything we've talked about is being done.
Yes.
That's a lot.
I think as a group, we have to get the message out that this is happening. I think, you know, the, the staff is getting the message out to the staff, but I think we have to get the message out to the, you know, while we're planning these other things, they're not happening in isolation.
That's right.
So the budget is not happening in isolation, it's happening with the capital plan. The capital plan is not happening in isolation, it's happening with the blueprint. Um, and I think we have to start being the voice of staff.
And in one community that I've done this in, in Illinois, About Your Size, um, a couple of school committee members, they call them school boards in Illinois, started advocating for, um, businesses to be marketing agents of their work. In other words, One Diner had a placemat.
Placemat?
Yes. Um, church bulletins included pieces and parts. So that it just like became, oh, I'm at Subway, or I'm at Dunkin' Donuts, here's that thing. Oh, look, Mom, look, Mom, look, Grandma. So if we have any connections with any kind of, um, I don't know what you call them, city groups, um, to start sharing. That's one way to get people involved. Any other next steps we wanna take?
So do, so other than a joint meeting, do we come back at this?
I would like to. I think I did something in red and I was going, it's red because I have to work with Jason on dates somewhere.
I'll present drive to community, four thirteen?
Four thirteen, two, five, three.
Yeah, in, in that range somewhere, but there's somewhere that I wanna bring us all back together.
Oh, five-twenty-five, you have joint session.
Yeah, but that's too late.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
Yeah. I need to find, i- if you want, I need to find one more time. I'll send this to you, friend.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Would you like one more time?
I, eh, well, I can't, I, I'm at the point where I can't speak, but I think y'all should have one more time.
Yes, and, cause what we're talking about here is, we've done a lot of work in, in crafting something going forward. And we need to meet again to discuss it and to approve it or change it again to finalize it.
And, and, and the school committee is ultimately the owner of the, the document. And so if y'all, you know, if the school committee doesn't own it, it's really hard for anybody else to buy into it.
Would anyone be objectionable, if that's a word, for Jason and I to find a time where I come back and maybe not steal all your time? But before it gets to, it's almost ready to go to print?
Yep.
Let's see, when's the town meeting? Isn't that the?
May.
Is it May? Oh, it was April.
It's, it's Tuesday after Labor Day, isn't it?
Elections, April.
Yeah, elections are in April.
Town meeting is.
Town meetings are in May.
May, Memorial, right around Memorial Day.
I think it's the day after Memorial and Blackstone.
Blackstone's right after Memorial Day.
It was like two weeks before.
And Millville's usually like the first or second Monday in May. Second Monday in May. Probably on the website.
We have two school committee meetings in April, right?
I don't know, cause there's April vacation.
We have the seventh and the twenty-eighth.
All right, so I will work out with Jason on that. How are your, um, typing skills holding up, Jason?
Great, I've got it, I've already shared all the notes with everybody.
Perfect. So, if Jason were to send a leadership message to the wider community tomorrow that could be told in a couple of sentences, let's help him craft that leadership message about what we did tonight. So, because what people don't know, they're going to make it up and clear as kind. Dear stakeholders.
My dearest stakeholders.
Mommy dearest?
No, I'm thinking of, um, Bridgerton. My dearest reader. Or whatever that show is called.
Wait for that to come back.
Yeah, it's all, it's coming back.
What did we do?
It's coming back soon.
We have lost.
What'd you say?
They have lost.
Jason just totally derailed.
Sorry, everybody, dear stakeholders. We are pleased to share.
Now we are moving forward to shaping a brighter tomorrow.
Just the big ideas and heel.
Can we give a shout out to the steering committee?
Yeah, yeah.
We had, you know.
So we're pleased to review the work of the steering committee.
Right. I know, I did, yes, that's a good idea.
We're focusing our attention in X, Y, Z.
Planning for the future.
Yep.
So.
Vision for a brighter tomorrow. A better, what word did we use? We didn't, we didn't, we used a good word.
Hashtag Jane for president. No, I'm just kidding. Jane, don't retire. Just kidding.
Dynamic, talented.
We have to watch the big buzzwords.
Yeah. I don't know, but instead of enhancement, we, oh, betterment.
Focusing on the future of the, the education in the district with your children in mind.
Nice.
This is to the steering committee though, right?
To everybody. Whoever everybody is.
Making changes that will make education equitable, diverse.
Do you have enough information, Jason, to turn it into a leadership message?
Uh, maybe.
No. Read what you got.
I've got.
Dear.
Dear stakeholders. Dearest.
Yes, my dearest stakeholders. We have, uh, we have, we have had an opportunity to share the good work of the Blueprint 2.0, Strategic Plan Steering Committee. We're excited to be working on the fut-, we are excited to be working on our future-focused plan that will help drive our students in district forward.
Our dynamic, future-focused plan.
Dynamic.
Did they get this article too?
Focus plan.
Yeah, right.
Drive our students in district forward.
Yep.
Perfect, simple sign-in.
Now go home and sleep on it and read it again in the morning.
That's right.
We'll get a whole different message back. I just want a copy of that one and then the red line.
That's right.
From me? Tammy wanted me to share.
All right.
Nothing advances.
Feedback, and Amanda has to go last, cause she has to give us the grand total. How did we do advocating for students? You can do one word or one phrase, and then I'm passing the baton to, um, a van discussion. So, let's, let's start with Tammy. One word or a phrase, how did this work for you tonight? How do you feel? Wasted time?
No, I think it was informative.
Yeah, okay.
My one word.
My soul sister Carrie.
Do it in one word. Oh, I actually, I liked going through the priorities and seeing like how far we have come. And how to steer the work moving forward.
Excellent.
Progress.
Progress, that's right.
Simply helpful, pretty much.
Skip Amanda. Tam.
How do I think we've done? I think we've made great progress in moving forward in a, in a document that allows us to be agile in what we're presenting. And, and that's a big buzzword for me tonight is agile.
Yeah, you're on that.
Because we can't, we can't sit still and use present tense. We must use a future tense and a future outlook in order to make the changes that we need to make.
Jane.
So, the, the reverse of that is I feel very reflective on the work that we have been capable and we have had the ten-, we have done and the potential to move so much further, um, because the, the work is here and the people are here to do it. And they, and so I wrote reflective and energized because it is time to, to move forward. But let's reflect that we have done some pretty fantastic things.
Absolutely.
Um, and with a team that, you know, when, that likes each other and works together and, you know, when I first started on the school committee, it was an argument a day. Like it was, I mean, you know, to the point of people standing up and yelling at each other. And, you know, we've come a long way, baby. And I think this energizes people to go a long way further. So the potential is there.
That's right.
Amazing potential.
Dr. DeFalco.
One word?
Or a phrase, not a dissertation.
Nope.
Sorry.
Hopeful.
She's punchy tonight.
Hopeful, all right.
Stole my word.
All right, Amanda.
I was gonna say hopeful, but.
Who's the hopeful, what's the, what's the synonym? You can, you can say ditto.
At least Matt wasn't here.
All right, all right, now, here's, here's the final score.
Uh-oh, here we go.
I think we're at like a four-point-five.
And what makes you say that?
Um, cause we obviously still have work to do. We're still educating kids, so our job's never done there.
And were, were our conversations focused on us, grown people, or students?
I think our focus is always on the students. It's unwavering at that, because that's what we're here for and.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you for allowing me to steal some of your space.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
It's a pleasure.
Always a pleasure.
Good to see you. I'm gonna listen to the van and then I'm gonna.
I hope it's a quick van.
Drive on out, out of here.
Are you headed back tomorrow?
Speeding out.
Speeding van. Uh, just very quickly, um, at our last budget workshop or last school committee meeting, we had discussed that we are looking, we put in a conservative estimate, say, uh, for a seventy-five thousand dollar savings for transportation. And looking at a few different ways to do that, um, we have had a few meetings since that and really kinda came up with like a multi-pronged way to try to get more bites of that apple. And so what we did is we looked at, what would it look like if, and there are some other ifs, by the way, that are not even on here. But these are the ones I think that we can do. If we took advantage of, and I say that respectfully, of our potential Bellingham partnership to combine a few routes. And, uh, their transportation director is still working with myself and Jill on a couple of different options. But we listed a few of the options here, um, and I'll talk about those in one second. And then we looked at, um, in addition to that, so not just one, but if we were to purchase our own van, running our own in-district transportation, um, for students that have specialized transportation. And we do have a van, we run a van now, uh, but adding a second van to that, uh, what the overall savings would be. So, uh, just walking through those, if we looked at the scenarios where we would partner with Bellingham, um, you'll see a couple of runs on here. There is a wall pole run, which is through, uh, Byco. So that's essentially splitting our run to, uh, Byco to this particular, uh, mansion street address. We could actually cost-share that entire run. And we already have their numbers and our numbers of students and what we would need to put on that. And they have already purchased two vans. So essentially, we would, we would double up with them on their vans and we'd cost-share that run with them. The other Bellingham run, which is, is super important, is the Except Collaborative. We have one student, they have one student. So when you have a student, you're still paying for the whole run. You could have five students on that run, you're still paying for the run. You could have one student, you're paying for the run, right? It's the same cost. We don't pay more as, uh, by the student, you buy the run.
Okay.
So, uh, that would be an awesome opportunity to split, uh, because they have one, we have one, and right now, we're both paying for a separate run. And then the other is the Bradley School in, um, Providence. Uh, they have a student that goes to Meeting Street. We have a student that goes to Bradley. They're seven miles apart. So there is no reason that we can't double up. It's a very expensive run for us and for them. So, um, we actually think of those three runs, we should be able to cost-share those. So that's one, uh, saving scenario. If we, if the committee approves us to purchase a van, and we can talk about the different options for that, um, we could also do some in-district. So we have an in-district, um, Millville run, we have an in-district, a Tuin District, uh, high school and middle school runs. And it seems as though, uh, if we have a, uh, move forward with a one, um, it's kind of interesting. You can have, you can buy up to a twelve-passenger van. It doesn't matter the size, you can have more than eight students on it.
Right.
So, um, if we are able to move forward and purchase one van, we should be able to combine a couple of the runs that are listed here and actually, uh, save a, a very significant amount on in-district transportation. So, this proposal, if we're able to move forward with just these, uh, scenarios, would save us a hundred and eighty-two thousand. That's what we, uh, that's what we spend, uh, on those runs. If you look at the, um, yellow box below, this is the cost. So there are, there are a couple of different options and we've found quite a few vans. Uh, we're gonna have to travel a little bit, uh, to, to go out and purchase. And, uh, Neil has been really, uh, gracious to partner with us, Neil Telstone, to go out and look at the vans with us to make sure that, you know, from a mechanical perspective, they're in really good shape. Uh, most of them, um, are pre-owned, but they're within the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, um, year, so they're not super old. Nor do they have a ton of miles on them. Uh, there's quite a few we're looking at right now. But if we were to purchase it outright, um, we can buy for sixty-three thousand. The maintenance, the estimated maintenance is twenty-five hundred. The gas is, is very expensive because we're looking at potentially upwards of four dollars a gallon. Uh, insurance, we did get a cost estimate on that, fifty-two hundred for the year. And if we bought it outright, the cost in year one is seventy-eight thousand. The cost in year two and subsequent years is about eleven thousand, seven hundred. So you can see the first year, our savings is less because it's more upfront costs. The second option. The second option is to finance, if we wanted to finance it. You can see the difference, right? Obviously, it's the interest. The first quote that we received was 1.9, but I think we will probably end up with a bit of a higher interest rate just because of inflation and the way the market is moving. Those rates change daily. So, that was the latest interest rate we looked at. So, overall, for the life of the 60-month financing, which is, we would look at a five-year finance, you can see the difference in what we would pay with the interest on top of that. So you can see the maintenance costs, annual fuel costs, insurance, et cetera, et cetera. You can see, I mean, you can see the numbers in front of you. So the overall cost, year one, 26,100 versus the 78. But then again, you can see it in year two, right, 26,100, wherein year two of the purchase, it was 11, so it was 11,000.
So do we have the financial wherewithal, if we don't have certified E and D, to pay for the whole thing this year?
Matt feels strongly that we would be able to do that.
Because if we do, my leaning would be to do that and not put the burden on future years. But Tim wants to say something different.
No, I, I agree with you totally. If, if we can come up with the money to buy it outright, that's the, the methodology we should, we should use. But my question is in this, if we're using it, it's a 12-passenger vehicle, 15-passenger vehicle, whatever, would that be enough to get the cheerleaders to their competition? So we wouldn't pay $8,000 to Telstone to use a bus?
So, so that's the third bucket that we didn't even list out here, are the in, the other in-district possibilities. Now, it's important to, to note, we've learned a lot about vans, by the way, during this process. So yes, Tim, to your question. Not only that, but we also talked about using it for shuttle runs between the middle and high school for different athletics.
Does that also play into the accelerated academies?
Yes, it does for that as well.
The only thing is that we have to caution that a lot of these things run at the same time.
Yeah.
And you, you can't, you can't shuttle people back and forth to the fields while taking the kid home.
Cheerleaders, or to the cheerleaders.
You know, like a cheerleader on a Saturday is great.
Right.
But we have to make sure that our thoughts aren't overlapping using the same vehicle.
Well, so the good news is, we can only, so if we have a van running, you have to have a backup van.
Right.
So we do. We have our red van.
Yeah.
That we don't use to shuttle, or do any runs with. That's like our backup van. But what we could do in using this, if we purchase a new second van, the red van, we can use for in-district shuttles, but we cannot put the red van on any routes. That's why we're not using it now for any routes. So we would be able to look at, if you're using the new van to shuttle, we could still use the red van to shuttle, but you can't use the red van on an actual route, if that makes sense.
Somebody's gotta be really creative, because you can't, because you can't not pick up the Bradley person, because you have to shuttle the...
Right.
But the red van can do the shuttle.
Right.
Understood.
We use the red van for 18 to 22 right now? What is the red van used?
Very, very little.
Comes to my house every year.
Comes to my house, yeah. That's what drops your packet off at your house.
Makes my dog bark.
So, I have a question on the, our splits here. On, on the, the trips to Walpole and the Except Collaborative and the Bradley School, just because I don't know.
Sure.
Are these special needs students that have special transportation needs?
Students with special needs.
Would we have to worry about wheelchair access and handicap access on a vehicle to transport these children?
If the child requires that. So, we had this discussion. If, if you are going to bring online a second wheelchair accessible van, so it has the lift, then you have to have another backup. So, we, at this point, would purchase the van with the option, if we needed to, down the line, add a wheelchair accessibility feature to it. But just, we would have to know that if we have two vans that have wheelchair accessibility runs, our backup van then needs to have the wheelchair accessibility piece to it.
Yes.
Which right now, it doesn't.
Well, that, that, going back to my question, though, with these children going to these remote destinations, are they in a wheelchair? Do they have to have that specialized transportation?
So some of them are, and the Bellingham vans that they purchased are wheelchair accessible. So they would do those runs, and we would be able to utilize that on, on their vans.
And we would do the runs that go.
And we would do the in-district, right.
So can our wheelchair van be a backup to their wheelchair van if we're splitting the route?
We could.
I'm just...
Yeah, no.
I mean, that's like, I, I don't know what the guy, I mean, what guidance are you looking at?
We definitely, believe it or not, there is actual...
I know, I'm sure, I mean, it sounds complicated.
Yeah, but yes, there's no reason we couldn't do that, Tammy, to your question.
Is there special insurance coverage to transport someone that's not in your district in your vehicle?
No.
No?
It's covered like any, you're driving.
Any person in the...
So, so that leads me to my final question. First of all...
First of all, it won't be your final question, ever, but okay.
You're right. I actually have two questions. One, and I know we have to do this kind of more quickly, you know, it's time sensitive. But I always go back to like the grant thing, like is anybody out there willing, especially if it's something that we share with Bellingham, like would a Dean Bank be willing to provide some funding and get double dip on reaching out to the Bellingham and Blackstone community?
Or a car deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I know that other schools have lots of signage on their vehicles.
Yes.
And then the other question is, this is great, but then don't we need some personnel to drive these routes?
Yes, and so what we have discussed with that, because of the route times and because of our, the way our Unit C contract is set up, our custodians are also, those that had the pleasure of doing Unit C bargaining last time, are also the same classification as our van drivers. So we actually already have the, the mechanism to do that. And we already have an individual that's in that position, that she does the runs now.
Okay.
So what we would do is open up the opportunity to our custodial staff, for those that might be interested, because it will cost a little bit more in personnel, but it won't cost us a full-time van driver, which, you know, the $250,000. But it will cost us a little bit more in terms of their hourly rate, and maybe adding an hour or two to their schedule each day. So we would give that as an opportunity to our Unit C staff that are in the custodial, in that, in that bracket.
And so in reality, the total savings comes down, because you have to pay this extra money, you know what I mean?
Sure.
So, but, I mean, it's still great. I mean, I don't think there's, it doesn't seem, I don't know, we'll vote in a minute, but...
We're gonna save over $150,000 a year.
Regardless.
Just by getting the van.
And, and possibly more, if we can figure out the in-district, like you were saying, Tammy, like the runs and the shuttling.
Shuttles.
So, I'll move that we buy a van.
Purchase.
I'll second.
Purchase a van.
Carrie, second?
Yeah, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Better be purple.
Would this purchase be done?
5/22 funds and...
You can get one of those skins, you know, those skins?
Yeah, the vinyl skins.
You can put the portrait of the graduate on the side of it.
There you go!
The vision state on the...
It needs a skin. It needs a skin, Jason.
Oh, the van does?
The portrait of the graduate on one side.
Not the fidget spinner?
Not the fidget spinner.
Listen, the fidget spinner's getting a lot of heat tonight.
Carrie, I'm not sure how our paths will cross. I'm sure they will. But I want to say that you've made a difference.